Notice a regular city council meeting on Monday, January the 9th, 2012, Jasper City Hall 465 South Vane Street. Let us once again show that it is six o'clock Central Standard Time. Do we have someone? Roy, could you lead us in a word of prayer?
I'd love to, sir. Thank you. Power heads please. Father in heaven, we come to you tonight in full agreement, Lord, that you are responsible for all that we have. We look to you for our guidance. We look to you for our protection, Father. We look to you for our inspiration, Lord, in all that we do. Let us be true servants, true servants, Father, to you and to make certain that whatever we do, Father, for our community, that we give glory to you, Father, because again, you are the one who gives us all the blessings in our life. Father, we ask your blessings on the families that are represented here this night. We ask for travel mercies for all of these folks who have come to be part of our community. We ask your blessings upon the mayor and our city council, Father, and all of our city government. Father, there's so much to do and so much that's important for all of us to focus on. Father, we just, again, continue to ask that we put aside any differences and always look, always look for the common ground, Father, so that we can stand proudly side by side as neighbors, as proud Texans, as proud Americans, Father. And do your work, Lord, and we ask your favor, Lord, Jesus Christ our Lord.
Amen. Thank you. We'd like to welcome all the boys into the people's house. And let me start. Let me start with cutting my telephone off before I ask everyone else to. I might be embarrassed. Thank you so much for your consideration. We have up next the departmental reports. You'll see there in your package. If you look through those departmental reports, city council members, I know that you've already had a chance to go over these earlier, as these packets were provided to you on Friday, but you may have questions at this time. Also, you will see in there the Jasper County appraisal district results for that election of Officer Sparr, the Jasper County appraisal district. I think no questions or concerns. We have one request for public comment, Bishop L.J. Gilery.
Right. Public comment on the information. Okay. Under information, council, I'd like to note that in 2005, the county passed a set of rules for the order to push the counties to be conducted. How do you convert back to one of them?
Okay. In 2005?
Yes.
Okay. And what changes would that signify?
Opening of the meeting. It's supposed to be done according to Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay. And what is Robert's Rules of Order per then?
When you open a meeting, you're supposed to, when you open a meeting, you don't just call a meeting to order, you have to get a motion and a second to open. It's called order, and you close it, same thing. You have to get a motion and a second to close a meeting.
Okay. I've been here on this council, I've been here for many years, and I've never seen that done.
We were doing it up until the recall, up until the night that they had to escort two men out. And that night, after that night, everything changed. That's what it was. Father.
Okay. I'll get with the city's attorney, and I'll also get, review that vote, approve the order, and I'll look at that. Mr. Gilery, you have three minutes.
Thank you. This is still Bishop Mayor, with all due respect, Mayor and City Council. You know, I came down here the day that you all had the recall election. Prior to that, I've been in town talking to residents and citizens here in Jasper at their request. A buzzer international is a 401(c)(3) government oversight agency. Some people tend to use the media and their bully pits as a way to disseminate false information. If you look at this, council, I don't know how your city attorney would have mistaken this for a Justice Department bag, okay? When we come in, we work with the Justice Department, consolidation specialists, to try to relieve any tension, racial tension, that's taking place in cities, and we've done this across the nation. For the last 10 years, I've visited the 10 most dangerous cities in America, and the work that we have done has bring those cities either off the list or lower on the list as most dangerous cities in America. Racism is not an easy subject to discuss. The issues here in Jasper relating to race is now exacerbated. I call this city council, the city manager, and all of those individuals that are truly concerned with the city of Jasper to take into consideration that you have residents that don't come to this meeting that have been affected. And I have offered to your chair and others to put together a panel, a committee of people that would sincerely and earnestly deal and address some of these issues. Mr. Mayor, you keep watching your watch. I want to say this. When we came here, we gave a sincere, earnest hand to help with some of the issues. There are issues here, and we can't bury our head in the sand like an ostrich and pretend that racism isn't a real issue in this city. A buzzer international is here to help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. We have up next, consider approval for one set of minutes for regular city council meeting for December the 12th, 2011. Council being read over those minutes. Do we have a motion?
Move.
Move by Tommy Adams. Who was the second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Consider resolution number 2915, supporting and recognizing the Honor and Remember flag, Speaker Roy James, to come forth in present. The presentation on behalf of the Honor and Remember organization.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Tommy, Brandy, it's a pleasure to be in front of you and be with you this evening. I'm here on behalf of a national organization. We too are a 501(c)(3). This organization was founded in 2008 by a gentleman who lost his son in Fallujah, Iraq. You might remember that name, Fallujah. That was a very, very tough time in our fight in Iraq prior to our surge, so that we can fight that back. He lost his son in 2005, and as a lot of parents do when they lose a member of their family, and they grieve through the process, they try to find ways to keep the memory of their loved one alive and work with others to do the same. And so he was able to create what we think is a very noble and honorable organization that is certainly due its time, and it's called Honor and Remember. I've got some information here I'd like to give to each of you, and I'm going to call on a couple of members of our board of directors. Every state is creating a chapter of this national organization. I'm happy to say that as of November the 11th, the state of Texas now has a chapter of this organization, and the headquarters of that chapter is here in Jasper, Texas. I am the state chapter director for Honor and Remember. Let me use an information. You've got a brochure from our national organization that gives you a lot of information, and we're just going to make this as brief as possible, because I know you have other business to attend to, but some information there for you. You may have heard or even participated. We were blessed to have the mayor at our event on December the 29th, when we raised the flag for the first time in the state of Texas at the county courthouse. And that's the reason why we're with you this evening, in hopes that we can get you to do the same that the judge and the county commissioners have done. Right now, I'd like to, it's truly my honor to introduce to you our military and veterans liaison coordinator for the state Texas chapter of Honor and Remember. He is a Purple Heart, Bronze Star, Silver Star wounded warrior from Iraq and Afghanistan. It's my absolute pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Buck Collins.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
The flag is ordered. On December 29th, 2005, George Anthony Lutz was killed by a sniper bullet while he was on patrol in Fallujah, Iraq. His family and friends endured the shock, emotional anger, agony, and overwhelming loss accompanied by the news of Tony's death, just like many families who have suffered the same tragedy. In the months that followed Tony's funeral, his father, George, visited the families who had lost loved ones in the war on terror. He had begun to sense that he had joined the ranks of a unique fellowship. These families were the latest in a group that originated in the American Revolution, when the first soldiers shed their blood for our freedom and gave their lives. George found another commonality among the families of the fallen heroes. After the grief transitioned to numbness and finally to acceptance, many families wanted to know two things: that their sacrifice was not in vain and that the nation would not forget. These concerns led George on a quest to discover if there was a universally recognized symbol that specifically acknowledges the men and women of the U.S. Armed Forces who never made it home. To his surprise, he found nothing. Thus, the Honor and Remember flag was conceived. I'm going to be followed by Keith Hale.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Keith Hale. I'm the volunteer coordinator for the state chapter for Texas. One of the unique features of our flag is the fact that you can personalize it. You can add the name, rank, of a specific loved one who has passed away to the bottom of the flag as a tribute. The essential goal of our organization is to place a personalized flag in the hands of the immediate families of every man and woman who died in military service to our country. State and national chapters have presented flags in honor of those who have died in war or in peacetime from World War I through today, and we will continue this part of our mission until all are respectfully remembered. Individuals and organizations have also sponsored and presented personalized flags on their own behalf. Ultimately, we anticipate distributing thousands of personalized flags. You can help us reach our goal by making donations or sponsoring a flag to honor these heroes. For more information on how to obtain an Honor and Remember flag or other related products, you can visit our website at www.honorandremember.org.
Mayor, council, if you would turn to the inside of your brochure, you'll see the flag design, and if you would, I'd like to read this so that not only yourself, but the folks that are with us this evening will understand what this flag stands for. The flag is very, very symbolic, and a great deal of time and effort went into its design. The Honor and Remember flag design is distinctive yet simple. Each detail on the flag symbolizes an important part of the overall meaning of the flag's message. It is intended to be flown below the flag of the United States. The red field of the design represents the blood spilled by brave men and women in American military throughout our history, who gave their lives so that our nation would remain free. The white field below the gold star recognizes the purity of sacrifice. There is no greater price an American can pay than to give his or her life to service to our country. The blue star represents active service in military conflict. This symbol originated with World War I, but on this flag, it signifies the service in all wars from the American Revolution to present day. The gold star signifies the ultimate sacrifice of a warrior in active service who will not return home. Gold reflects the value of the life that was given. The folded flag signifies the final tribute to an individual's life, presented to the family for their significant loss. The flame is an eternal reminder of the spirit that has departed this life, yet burns on in our memory of all who knew and loved a fallen hero. We will always honor their selfless sacrifice and remember them individually by name. Mayor, City Council, we are here in hopes that you will follow suit with our revolution that we received on December the 12th by the county judge and the county commissioners, unanimously recognizing the national organization for what it stands for, recognizing the flag for what it stands for as well, which is our mission to see to it that it becomes the national remembrance flag. There is legislation in Congress currently that will make that so. Part of our efforts here statewide is also to work with our state representatives, as we are with James White, and to make certain that our legislation at the state Capitol also officially recognizes that flag so it can be flown at our capitals. But we're doing the grassroots work and starting our pebble in the water, if you will, here in Jasper, Jasper County and the city. So we're asking for this body to please recognize this organization, the Texas chapter as well. This is a volunteer organization. We all work as volunteers. It is open to anyone who wishes to participate, and if they want any more information, certainly they can contact us as well. But we would like you folks to consider giving us a set-like resolution to allow us and give us the authority to fly this flag at City Hall and other city offices, such as the Police Department, Fire Department, and what have you.
Okay. Do we have a motion from the council?
Move that we give this organization permission to fly the flag. Resolution 2915.
We have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr., first, a motion by Mr. Tommy Adams, second by Mr. Sayers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. James, for coming forward.
Mayor, gentlemen, thank you so very much. We appreciate you.
And I'd like to mention to the council that this has been in the works for some time, so thank you. Consider number 2916. This is item number three, an interlocal agreement with Jasper Independent School District for the May election. Tommy, would you like to explain that to us? Answer any questions that might be brought?
This is just the interlocal agreement between us and the Jasper Independent School District for the May election. It's a form I see every year. Any questions?
No. All this is, is putting in the commission, and I guess they already have the commission, agreeing to hold elections, agreeing for them to hold elections with us.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion, resolution 2916.
Mr. Sayers' motion, Mr. Sayers', second by Alton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As the record shows, there is no opponent. Considering a local agreement with Jasper County for the May election, it's basically the same thing.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Sayers', second by Mr. Scott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? As the record shows, there is none. Okay. Up next, consider request by Carrie Ellis, the director for the Jasper Economic Development Corporation, to approve the following three propositions and to place them on the May 2012 ballot. Proposition number one, to use 4A revenues for 4B category of entertainment, tourist, and convention facilities. Proposition number two, to allow Jedco to use 4A revenues for 4B category, category of public parks and related open space improvements. Proposition number three, use 4A revenues for 4B category of any improvements, facilities that are related to projects that the board in its discretion determines promotes or develops new or expanded business enterprises that could create or retain primary jobs. Now, the board of Jedco is in agreement with all of these.
Yes.
Is that correct, Carrie?
That's correct.
Any questions of this board?
Discuss. The decision of the 4A revenues are supposed to be economic.
Ask. Carrie, could you?
Sure. Jedco is what's known as a 4A corporation, and we take city sales tax that were allocated by voters of the city to use mainly for manufacturing and industry. And what we're wanting to do now with, you know, manufacturing's slow and the economy is bad as it is, is to expand the use of that funds to allow us to do projects under section 4B of the Texas Government Code, which would allow us to do entertainment facilities, tourist facilities, and convention centers. That would include auditoriums, amphitheaters, concert halls, museums, anything along those lines that we could actually use our funds for if the voters permit us to use our funds for that. The other is public parks and related open spaces, which would be open space improvements or public parks, such as the Arboretum, as an example. We could assist with funds in that area. We did this two years ago to allow us to use some of our funds for the ballparks, and the purpose was to bring in tournaments and bring more people into Jasper to spend their money, stay in the hotels, eat at the restaurants, and expand the tax base. The third one here is just allowing us to, we pretty much can do this anyway. This just takes a little bit off of the manufacturing and industry. We can still do that, but it kind of expands that to allow us to do other types of businesses that create the primary jobs.
Shouldn't we be focusing more on primary jobs and getting industry in here?
We are focused on that. This is just inclusive. This is just to include it. In case something like, in case somebody comes here and wants to build a movie theater or bowling alley, then we would be able to assist in those funds. We are not going to go looking for those types of projects. Our focus is manufacturing and industry, and we're currently working with two companies right now, so that will be our focus. This will just be, if something like that should come up, then Jedco's funds can be used to help fund that and get that, and that will bring people to Jasper to spend their tourist dollars.
I understand it's bringing people to Jasper and tourist dollars, but about people that are unemployed, need help.
Like I said, that is our main focus, and we're currently working with two manufacturing industries right now, and that will continue to be our focus, to bring jobs to Jasper and retain the jobs we do have, and help the businesses that are here expand so they can hire more people.
Do we have a motion?
I like the motion.
Okay. Mr. Sayers made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Adams. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? So we've got two that voted for, one that voted against. Let the major show that it passed, Mr. Scott voting against. Okay. Up next, we have consideration, the Health Coast Strategic Highway Coalition, 2012. Tommy, I guess maybe you need to talk about this. It's $2,613.68.
We always share the cause between the city and Jedco, so that actually cuts our use in half.
Are there any updates? I don't know of any.
This is the coalition for the widening of 190 and improvements to Highway 190. Dutch Thompson is the chairman of this commission, and then we have a lobbyist in Austin that works out of this coalition, and we've been in this, I think this is our fourth year to invest in this.
Is it moving anywhere? Is it going below there?
We've had several meetings, and Texas has hired a consultant themselves to look at the various sections and determine what would be the better alternatives, four lane and or just road shoulders and different things. There's been some movement because of the military necessity between Colleen and the Louisiana border, and then they've gotten involved in trying to bring it from El Paso to Fort Bliss all the way to the Louisiana border, aid at Fort Polk or whatever. So I haven't had an update in the last couple of months, but I do know that there's ongoing talks and lobbying and what have you.
Well, there's been some movement, to your question, but I don't know that any of it's been done. The state of Louisiana has now made 28 all the way from Alexandria to Leesville, four lane.
Is that?
So that's part of this. This would basically go from Alexandria, the first deal would go from Alexandria to Colleen, and it'd be a four-lane highway from Alexandria to Colleen, like the first step of it. Not associated with this, the state of Louisiana now has made Alexandria to Leesville 28 four-lane, and they've made great improvements in the road, the 63 to here, but changing out some bridges and stuff, but I don't know.
What's your recommendation?
I recommend we go ahead and pay these dues, stay in.
Well, as you see, we've got the letter here from Judge John Thompson of Polk County, and he's asking us to pay the misdeeds, and he's also talking about some upcoming meetings that they're going to have. I don't, I don't know when they've been here. The last time I remember representing was here, Carrie, and you was in that meeting. And that's been some time ago, but statewide, federal-wise, and otherwise, I mean, who We probably won't live to see it, is what I'm telling you, but maybe our grandchildren We have a motion? Mr. Sayers made a motion to go ahead and continue the organization, it is seconded by Mr. Scott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show there is none. Okay. Consider the first reading of Franchise Revision Ordinance Number 02-12-1, granting rights and privileges in franchise to CenterPoint Energy Texas Gas Operations.
This is our natural gas ordinance. This one was to replace the May 7th, 2002 ordinance, which will expire 2012. The rate had gone up. We went from the, our current rate right now is 3%, and it went to 5% with an additional 7 cents per thousand cubic feet of transport, which is for the four-inch trunk lines that serve Terrebaikam and several others. We will also get a franchise fee off of those now, 7 cents per thousand cubic foot.
Is it paid monthly?
Quarterly. The previous ordinance was 10 years with a renewal, an automatic renewal of five years if there was no objection. It didn't make it to the 10th year. There was some negotiation, went on. We negotiated the 3% up to 5% on the fee, and looked like a real good ordinance to me, but the terms of the franchise is 20 years, and Councilman Scott has all against a full 20-year lease. So that being said, the floor is open for any discussion, I guess.
What's your recommendation? If we cut it back off 10 years, then you have to negotiate the rate again?
Correct.
Wouldn't you think that would be, wouldn't that retain the 5% rate and drop back to
Well, if we do nothing, it automatically drops back to 3. If we renegotiate, I don't know. I can't tell you what the new rate would be. I would like to have the opportunity to negotiate it 10-year with an automatic 10-year, if you're more comfortable with a 10-year ordinance.
Yeah. And I tell you what, I've served on several boards, and I've seen several organizations get in trouble with 20-year leases. There's one organization now that's in trouble by a 20-year lease on a building. The building burned down, and because of that 20-year lease, they're still having to pay the rent that they were paying in the land while rebuilding the building. Somebody had a big legal battle over that. So I've had several different cases where everybody that I know that went into a 20-year lease, always somebody ended up in shack there on the end of, or before it was over.
Is what, what is CenterPoint on this main line that comes through here? CenterPoint would not to Kirbyville and possibly Center. CenterPoint would not to Kirbyville, and possibly center cities on the other side of us be in the same, on the side connected with the same company. Does CenterPoint hope?
Yes.
Do we know what they're doing?
I don't. I'm assuming they're going on 20-year leases on mine, because this is strictly, it has to do with the franchise fees and their rights, and it's a non-exclusive franchise. If XYZ Gas comes in in the morning and wants to put in a trump system and ship natural gas in from Saudi Arabia, they're fine to do it. I mean, this is just a set price on what they're going to pay us for the terms of this contract, but I look back on the old one, and it was a 10-year with a five-year automatic renewal, you know, if there wasn't any.
Which is the automatic renewal kicking in?
The one now, if we don't do the new one, will happen May 7, 2012. If we don't tell them 90 days beforehand, it'll automatically renew at 3%.
When is that date? February what? Before the next meeting or after the next meeting?
Probably right after the next meeting.
So we could handle this, and give them time to check with other cities, see how they can handle this?
What we could do, my solution to it is, let me go back and visit with them and do a 10-year with an automatic 10-year renewal if there's no objection. It'd be a 20-year, but it'd be 10-year, and then if somebody had a heart or whatever, and you've got all kind of, you've got the skate clauses built all in here, because Section 10 Compliance and Remedies says that anything that they do in violation, I would let them know and be out of it in 30 days, so.
Okay, but the way that this is written, we can't make a motion tonight. The only thing we can do is, I understand it would make a motion tonight, or either, we could either pass this as adopted, or we can reject it as adopted, as written here. But what do you say that you'd like to go, you would go talk, if we reject it tonight, then we go talk to them and try and get a 10-year lease?
10-year with automatic renewal with the same money, because it's almost double the money, so I hate to lose that. Table it.
I have no problem with a 20-year. I mean, if you think you can -- what's your recommendation? Are you afraid of the 20-year?
I don't have a problem with a 20-year lease, just on, I mean, it's not a building or anything, it's just.
It's just agreement to pay us 5%.
And I don't foresee going back in three years and saying, you got to pay us 20% of your.
Spend 3% for how long?
Probably 15 years.
Or is it before that?
2%.
Okay.
So we went from 3 to 5. Plus, they keep in the 7 cents on the transport fee. We can table and go back to them and try to get a 10-year with an automatic renewal of 10 years if there's no.
What if we do that? I think I like to do 10 years, then automatic renewal, four districts, 10 years.
Do we have a motion to table? Your motion table to second?
Second.
Okay, here's table until the next meeting. Tommy, I'll talk to you later. I just don't, we don't want to get, I hope we don't go out and get some kind of interman, middleman consultant involved in this. You know, like on some other franchise deals that we did, where all of a sudden there's a middleman, you got to pay him. Okay, up next, item number eight, consider ordinance number 1-12-1, revision of existing animal and fowl ordinance. And we have the city's animal control officer here tonight, and would you, or Tommy, whichever one of y'all would like to explain why we're doing this or why we're proposing? I understand, is this just some clerical?
Yes, the noise hadn't ever been really defined, shall we say, and we put it back in, and the number of dogs, the Section 517, it was already there, but there was some discrepancy about two yard dogs and how many house dogs, and of course, one thing to another, so we tried to clarify it. There's two mature dogs on the outside of remises, one by anyone behind. Basically, they've been there, we're just clarifying and making them more understandable.
Also, there's a designation of the hours.
Correct, on the noise, 10 p.m. to 6 a.m.
About noise, which is from 10 p.m. at night to 6 o'clock in the morning? Which before, was it just around the clock?
There was no, you'd get a complaint, and you could go to them, but this is specifying quite hours, 10 p.m. to 6 a.m.
I like enough motion to adopt, 1-12-1.
Motion made by Mr. Sayers to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Adams. All those in favor say aye. Is there any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Scott is opposed. Okay, with that, Doug, the measure passes. Being no other action on the agenda, we stand adjourned.